Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming out. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Smith?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Scribner?
Here.
Councilmember Pogecourt?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Is there someone for the end of the case tonight? Thank you very much. If you'd all please stand. Let's bow our heads and go before the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you for your grace and your mercy to us. We thank you for this wonderful golden state of California and this awesome city of Tehachapi that's only second to your chosen nation, Israel. I love this city and I just pray for your blessings to be upon it. I thank you for the council members and those present here tonight. I just pray that your blessings would be upon them personally and professionally. I pray for your wisdom and your guidance as you lead the council in making important decisions for the city. We pray for growth. We pray for healthy growth and we pray for all the people that you're going to be bringing to Tehachapi to raise their families and live the American dream. So I just pray that Tehachapi would continue to be, would be a place where our dreams could come true. We pray all of this in your son's name and all of God's people's sake.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. John, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Salute the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Speak into the microphone since it is being recorded. If anyone wants to speak tonight, if you please fill out a speaker card before you come up. With that, we will get started. With the consent agenda, this item is considered routine, non-controversial, and we'll take everything in this in order unless anyone from the public or council wants something removed. Is there anyone in the audience that would like something removed for separate discussion? Anyone on the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry. Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogecourt?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to bring something before the council that's not on the agenda? Come on up, please. How you doing? Good to see you.
Who are your people?
I don't know. We just rolled in. They told us we have a meeting.
For the year. My name is Carl Garrett. Live at 702 Adita. And about nine o'clock Friday night, I thought we were being invaded. All of a sudden, at nine, quarter to nine, there was an explosion. It took me a few minutes. My wife jumped out of the shower, thought the place was falling down. I'm a pussycat. I don't know where she went. But there were some fireworks done across the street from my home in a location I do not feel was appropriate. It was done on the area of the women's softball field behind Jacobson Middle School. Yes, everything went up fine. If something had gone awry, like it does in fireworks, either our homes or the trailer park at 333 Denison Road would have had a problem. That was no place to hold a firework show. I have done fireworks for over 25 years as a firework technician. The last time that I can remember doing on school grounds was probably 40 years ago when we did it in M. Hartfield, right? Yeah. It echoed off of the buildings. The new sixes room, that's what caused most of the problem. There was some fallout. Lucky it went into the street. But as most of you know, fallout, like when we do it over at the airport, goes into the field and causes fires. I don't know who approved it. I did not see it on the agenda. And for the last year, I've been reading the agenda, but I never seen anything on the agenda. I talked to a number of people in our neighborhood and nobody knew about it until they seen it going up. Now, this was a professional firework show. I mean, it was way out of bounds for height and location from the main point of fireworks. Anyway, that's what I have to say, but great, it should have never happened there. That's why we hold it over at the airport because that location to our homes is no place to hold a firework show. Thank you.
Anyone else want to bring something for the council that's not on the agenda? All right. Thank you, Carl. Finance Director's Report. RSI Petroleum.
Mayor Smith, I need to recuse myself because I'm currently unemployed with RSI Petroleum.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Smith, if you'd like, I can take this item. It's our regularly scheduled payment to RSI Petroleum for fuel for our Public Works and Police Department, total $5,559.08. So we recommend approval of that payment, please.
Is there anyone in the audience would like to comment on RSI Petroleum? All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I can move. It'd be approved?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogecourt?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to authorize the dispersance of bills for RSI Petroleum with a recusal from Mayor Pro Tim Davies.
Item 10, Police Chief Record.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Smith and council members. The item I have for you this evening is an urgency ordinance relating to administrative citations and fines for violations of the city's fireworks regulations. The City of Tatchby prohibits any person from firing, discharging, exploding, selling, giving away, or offering for sale any personal fireworks, there's a long list of them there, or any combustible or other article of fireworks of like nature within city limits without special permit. This fireworks prohibition is outlined in Section 9.16.010 of our municipal code and is considered a misdemeanor criminal offense. City of Tatchby is currently experiencing extreme drought conditions and regularly experiences high winds in the area. These conditions coupled with an increase in the use of personal fireworks within the city increases the risk of wildfires and presents a significant hazard to the personal safety and property of our residents and surrounding communities. In response to this public safety concern, we drafted the proposed urgency ordinance adding Section 9.16.020 to Chapter 9.16 of our municipal code. This urgency ordinance establishes an alternative punishment for a violation of the fireworks ordinance by allowing the chief of police or his designee to issue administrative citations for illegal fireworks, violations, and expanded definitions of those who can be issued citations to include the natural person or legal entity committing a violation of this chapter or the owner, tenant, co-tenant, lessee, sublesssee, or other person with any right to possession of the property where a violation of this chapter occurs, to include without limitation parent or legal guardian of a minor that commits a violation of this chapter. This urgency ordinance allows the city council to establish penalties for a violation of its fireworks ordinance at Section 9.16.010 by separate resolution. Staff suggests the penalty be established as a monetary fine of $1,000 per violation. Upon adoption of this urgency ordinance and resolution establishing the fine, the city will launch a community awareness campaign to educate the public about the negative impacts of personal fireworks use, the prohibition of such activity within city limits, and the penalties associated with the violation. I believe that this will deter people from firing off illegal fireworks. It was a big problem last year and with our current conditions, I think it's important to do that. So if you have any questions, we have to answer.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? I think it was appropriate from Carl's comments, and it wouldn't hurt to actually address that comment of what transpired, just for the record, even though we don't have a full audience tonight, but for the record, just a clarification of what happened and what we would be doing in the future.
I would be happy to address that. Tatchby Unified School District approached the City of Tehachapi and Kern County Fire Department in regards to a celebration for the senior graduating class of 2020. They obtained a permit from Kern County Fire Department. They utilized Zambelli Fireworks, which is a nationwide fireworks company, the same company that the City of Tehachapi utilizes for our Fourth of July Independence Celebration. And so they were allowed to have a small display. It was an eight-minute display. It was actually, they were lit from the softball fields, which are south of the high school, east of Jacobson Junior High, the old junior high, in the grassy area, the green lawn grassy area, with permits through the Kern County Fire Department. Also, all residents within a one-mile radius, and I have here Mr. Garrett Key's address. He was sent a card along with everybody in that area one week prior, alerting them of the festivities that were going to be taking place. So that's what happened on Friday night. We're in full support of it. Obviously, when fireworks are lit, it does create a bang and noise and sometimes cause confusion. That's why the school district elected to send everybody a notification that this would be happening.
All right. That clarifies that because I had comments, what happened, like Carl didn't get the card or didn't read it or whatever, but at the same time.
So much of it jumped mail, you know?
I understand. But at the same time, when something's going off like that, it does cause a stir.
It does, and we appreciate the comment, but we were in full support. You know, the students, the senior graduating class, they had a tough year. Everybody has had a tough year, and the school district wanted to do something special for them. I've seen a lot of photos of the graduating class with the fireworks in the background, and they were quite amazing photos. So it's something, at least they can take something with them as they move on to their next steps in life. The ordinance this evening is very different. It's, you know, kind of apropos. We're talking about fireworks here, but illegal fireworks in the City of Tehachapi, and I say illegal fireworks, the event on Friday night, it was a legal event. Illegal fireworks are a big problem for us. I think everybody in this room would agree, you know, the fire danger, the noise. As a matter of fact, we lost our depot, remember? Not so long ago, just 11 years ago this month, actually, and it burned to the ground, and that cost taxpayers $2 million to rebuild that structure in its entirety. So we take it very serious. Public safety is very serious. It's first and foremost what we do.
And then the other item, we'll get back to the ordinance. I think we all got phone calls regarding the cleanup of the debris. And then would you just explain what happened the next day?
Absolutely. Be happy to. So the next morning, we did receive some phone calls from residents, and I received a couple of phone calls from city council members. I immediately contacted the school district. They were very apologetic and sent people out to clean up the debris, if you will. There's, you know, there's cardboard and things that float to the ground, ashes and cardboard. The school district was very apologetic again and very willing and able to clean up any mess that was left behind, and they did so, I believe, to everybody's satisfaction. This is a one-time event. This is, we're not going to be allowing fireworks to be shot just, you know, every time somebody wants to have a celebration or party, quite frankly. We reserve that for very, very special occasions, and I believe this was one of those events.
All right. Meanwhile, back at the ranch. Are there any comments from the audience regarding?
What about safe and sane, Chief?
Safe what now?
Safe and sane fireworks.
Safe and sane fireworks.
Yes, sir. We look at that. We cannot prohibit the safe and sane fireworks.
All right. So you're saying you can have sparklers and stuff like this, those safe and sane fireworks?
Yes.
Okay. So the ones that go off two blocks to the north of me, or a block to the north of me downtown, before you can even get to the phone, they're done?
Again, we're going to launch a pretty aggressive public education campaign to get this message out. And again, you know, I think we're experiencing probably the most severe drought that we've ever had here in California. And, you know, with the wind conditions that we have here, again, it's really problematic for us as a community, these fireworks. And last year particularly, we had a huge problem with the bottle rockets and the explosions. I mean, just explosions. It was really pretty problematic for us and a lot of complaints, and not just in my office but to City Hall as well, of, you know, wanting us to do something with these illegal fireworks. So, you know, as it stood previously with the misdemeanor violation, you know, the criminal process is a little more difficult than an administrative citation process. So, and this alternative punishment, it gives us a little cleaner method to hopefully deter that activity. And the fine recommendation is $1,000. That's what my staff recommended, just based on our current fine structure. Council is, by all means, you can decide what it is that you want for that fine. It's my understanding Kern County Fire Department, right now their fine is $1,500. So, you know, I think $1,000 is a pretty reasonable fine and yet significant enough to hopefully deter that activity.
Any council member discussion or comments?
Yes, the depot anniversary of the fire is tomorrow, June 8th, 2009, and it was a year later that they had rebuilt and opened. So that was phenomenal as far as I'm concerned. Yeah.
Any other comments?
Chief, I think you said that it was $1,000 per violation. So does that mean that if, per person, that is, are you guys going to total up the number of fireworks that they're looking to light up?
If they were to launch three fireworks, yes, I'll give them three citations. Yes, per violation.
Well, I agree with your logic. I think it's a calculated risk. If it's too low, folks will just gamble and accept that they might get caught, and I think $1,000 is a serious number. It's lower than, like you said, the county, but I agree. I think this is important, people understand that, you know, we're just not a community that can, you know, easily allow for that and keep people safe.
Yeah, and we're surrounded by some communities that, you know, Bakersfield allows fireworks and, you know, we have people that are moving here from other areas and they're accustomed to that Fourth of July celebration, light-off fireworks. We need to let them know that it's prohibited here, and we can't do that for obvious reasons.
But this is not a change because it's always been prohibited. So this is consistent. But what is the change that you're asking for today?
The change is to allow us to administer an administrative citation for the $1,000 fine as opposed to just going the criminal route.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I was at graduation, my oldest grandson graduated. He had a horrible year. We all are sick of Zoom. We will never Zoom again. And they graduated, they had a nice event, no problems, and we kept standing out there wondering why they weren't turning the lights on because we couldn't see. And all of a sudden, and people were in tears. They were so happy that those kids were honored in some way because they missed a whole year. They didn't get anything. And there's pictures everywhere of the kids in their cap and gown and the fireworks behind them, and I just think it was an awesome tribute.
Thank you. Now, I thought all mountain areas in Kern County were restricted, correct?
That's the way it used to be.
It's still restricted.
City limits, yes.
It is. And so what we're doing tonight again is asking permission to, rather than go the criminal route, just an administrative citation. So they were illegal two minutes ago, they're still illegal. We're just asking for the ability to enforce locally.
All right. Thank you, Chief. You have a motion to approve?
I so move.
Phil, this is the ordinance, right? You've got two motions. You've got the ordinance and then you've got the resolution.
All right. Should we take them separately? Separate, separate. All right. The first one is to adopt an urgency ordinance amending Chapter 9.16 of the Tatchby Municipal Code relating to administrative citations and fines for violations of the city's fireworks regulations. So is there a motion for that part of it?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogecourt?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to adopt an urgency ordinance amending Chapter 9.16 of the Tatchby Municipal Code relating to administrative citations and fines for violations of the city's fireworks regulations.
All right. Thank you. Now, do I have a motion to adopt a resolution?
So move.
Establishing fines for violations of the city's fireworks regulations. Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogecourt?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to adopt a resolution establishing fines for violations of the city's fireworks regulations.
Thank you. Next item is item 11, Development Services Director Report. Good evening, Jay.
Good evening. Honorable bear, council members, I only have one item for you tonight, and hopefully this is something, at least procedurally, that you're familiar with by now. Following the passage of Senate Bill 1, which is better known as the gas tax, the purpose of that tax effort starting back in 2017 was to route some of those gas tax funds to local agencies for road rehabilitation projects. It's relatively unencumbered funds, at least in my world, that means there's limited paperwork to do in order to utilize the money. For us, we receive about $270,000 annually through those monies, and they're scheduled to run for a 10-year period. And so the three primary items that are a component of what we do are that you must, once a year around this type of year, you must provide to the CTC or the California Transportation Commission a list of eligible projects for how you intend to spend the money. You must then, in October, report on how you spent the money. And lastly, you must not ever route this money to an existing maintenance activity, meaning you can't use it to supplant funds that were already being utilized by the local municipality for road maintenance. It needs to be in addition to that. So that's their way of making sure you don't just pay for employees or something of that nature with this money. Instead, that it's money that goes to actually rehabilitating roads. So we're here for item number one tonight. And just as a reminder, the list does not have to be, they want you to take your most educated guess on how you're going to spend the money, and then in October, you're simply expected to report to them what you actually did. Of course, you got to stay within the bounds on what you spend the money on, but they're not, you know, ultra-rigid about the decisions that are being made. That's it. We've been waiting a couple of years to get a little bit of money set aside, and so the projects that we have tonight for you are projects we're doing right now. So the first one, the list is there that we're proposing that you adopt tonight. One is service treatment of local roads, and we list the rough boundaries of that project. You guys awarded a previous cycle project already for a number of slurry seal projects around town that we're doing, taking care of a couple of neighborhoods. So we've listed the next in the series of that. By the way, this list comes from staff level work that's done primarily between myself and Don Marsh, the Public Works Director. We sat down and mapped out an entire 10-year program in which we look at the available funds here, we're looking at regional surface transportation or RSTP funds that we get, ATP funds that we get, looking at the regular funding sources and sequencing the projects based upon where we see the greatest need. There is some science, and that term's hard to use now, but there is some real science that goes behind how we do that. We do have a pavement maintenance program here in the city, which is an entire database of every road, every condition of every road in the city, and we utilize that program to help us prioritize which streets are done in an intelligent way. You can't just pick and choose, just to give you briefly. You don't want to just do that road and this road and that road and this road. So instead, we're looking at areas of town so that you can logically sequence that work and get the best bang for your buck. So that's, we're calling that the service treatment of local streets Phase 2. So C Street North to Tehachapi Boulevard bounded on the east by Mill Street and on Robinson, on Robinson by, on the, Mill Street would be on the west, Robinson would be on the east. So that's that project boundary area. We would be seal coating all of those roads, filling potholes and getting all nine of those streets. We also wish to rehabilitate the pavement on Davis and Green Street, and the boundaries are listed there in the report. Davis between Tatchby and F, I'm sorry, that's E, and then North Green between H and the airport, and South Green between F and E Street. Okay? And then lastly, we're putting on the list the purchase of a Skidsteer equipment cost for road maintenance. This is a piece of equipment we do not have, so we are allowed to spend the funds on this. And hopefully you guys know what a Skidsteer is. It's a bobcat. Maybe it's the best way to tell it to.
Oh, okay.
And they're a pretty useful piece of equipment. You can mount a temporary grinder on that or jackhammer on that. You've probably seen them employed that way. You may not know that, but you may have seen a piece of equipment employed that way. So that helps us in, we're specifically requesting this piece of equipment because a number of these previous two projects, our crews will go out and do pothole repair before sealing the road. So this piece of equipment is very helpful to us to do that preparatory work. So that's the list of the projects that I have for you tonight. This is just for fiscal year 21, '22. And so my recommendation is that you adopt a resolution, the city council, the City of Tehachapi approving the list of projects for fiscal year 2021, '22 funded by SB 1 and the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Be happy to answer.
Any questions from the audience? From council members?
Yes, I have one, Mayor. So we're going to put that out to bid for that piece of equipment?
Yes. Yeah, we'll follow our purchasing, so we have a purchasing policy here that the Finance Department has maintained and this council has adopted, so we'll follow that procedure. I think the equipment is likely over the 30, we have limits in there for when you have to do bids. I think between $30,000 and $70,000, we have to get multiple quotes. And so, but either way, we'll follow that.
So that'll come back before the council?
Yeah. If it's over 70, you have to do formal bidding, I'm pretty sure. So I'm not quite, Don would be able to tell you, unfortunately he's not here, how much that is expected to cost him.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jay. Need a motion then to approve?
Yes, please.
I so move.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogecourt?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to adopt a resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Assistant to the City Managers Report. Good evening, Carl.
Good evening, Mayor Smith and council members. This is like Jay's item, one of these annual events we have to go through. This is, there are actually three of them. I will do them one at a time because they're, we try to put them all together, it'd be a mouthful to get it all out there. So these are for our to levy assessments within our landscaping lighting districts. We'll start with We'll start with landscape and lighting assessment district number one. This, back on May, the council adopted resolutions 1721, 1821, and 1921, which initiated the proceedings, the approval of the preliminary engineer's report, and declaring our intent to levy assessments on the date of the public hearing for the landscape lighting district for fiscal year 21-22. The annual maintenance cost for the district is $305,786.80. Annual maintenance costs are funded through the assessments placed on the property tax bills. No alternate funding for this. We do have the engineer's report, it was attached in your agenda, gives the description. This is pretty much all the city, all the housing tracts are, for the most part, included in this, and it started back in '03-'04, and just kind of grew from there. And so, our recommendation tonight to adopt two resolutions, one to amend and approve the final engineer's report, and two, the city ordering the levy and collection of assessments within landscape lighting in District Number One for the next fiscal year.
By the way, you can take all of these together if you feel.
Oh, okay, let's do that.
Go ahead and, all right. Give me a report on that.
Unless no one objects, no one objects, we're good.
The next is for the Drainage Benefit Assessment District, 2014-1. Similar story here, this is for one of the, essentially the sumps located, this one is off behind tractor supply area near the airport, but the council had the resolutions back on May 17th, and with the initial preliminary engineer's report, the total maintenance cost of that district is $10,699.70, and again, funded through the assessments placed on the property tax bills. And the third is the Drainage Benefit Assessment District Number One, which is parcel map 11353, and again, on May 17th, we adopted those initial resolutions to initiate the proceedings. The total maintenance cost of this district is $7,310.36, again, funded through the assessment placed on the property tax bill. So the other two, same as the first, amend and approve the final engineer's report, and the city ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Drainage Benefit Assessment District Number One for the next fiscal year.
All right. We will open the public hearing on all three of these items. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Any council member comments on these assessment districts? All right, do I have a motion to approve all three as presented and read by title?
Mayor, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencord?
Yes.
It's a 5-0 vote amending and/or approving the final engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the landscaping and lighting district, assessment district number one, the drainage benefit assessment district number 2014-1, and the drainage benefit assessment district number one.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Cory. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Two things this evening, I just want to say thank you to Mariana Ashley Key Public Works. We had a very successful farmer's market on Thursday. It was the first of many this summer. Very well attended with local farmers and lots of people out and about, just a super successful event. So thank you for everyone that participated in every form or fashion. And the other is to remind council and the public, on June 15, we will be hosting a ceremonial ribbon cutting ceremony on Green Street, 8:30 in the morning. We're inviting everybody. This is not just a city event, this is open to everybody in the Tehachapi region and beyond, actually. We want to celebrate the fact that most restrictions have been lifted, we're going to be passing out ribbons, and we want everybody to participate in a ceremony where we cut the main ribbon with the mayor, and then lots of other ribbons on Green Street. It should only take 20 or 30 minutes, and we're looking forward to it. So June 15, 8:30 in the morning, right here on Green Street in front of the BK Theater. Please join us.
Okay. Thank you. Council member comments or reports? Christina?
I wanted to say how proud I was on Memorial Day to be a resident of this great country, and specifically Tehachapi. I saw many of my fellow council members there and lots of folks in this room there. It was a beautiful demonstration of our patriotism, and honored some folks that that day was not about, but were there to reflect on those they lost, their brothers in service, and it was just really a heartfelt event, beautifully done, I appreciate the city and their participation and making sure that happened. So just made me really proud and glad to see Tehachapi's back.
Thank you, Christina. Michael?
No, I have nothing, Mayor.
Susan?
I would also like to echo Farmer's Market. It's just so cool. I look forward to it every year, and I'm going to be out of town for around the fourth, so I'm going to miss one, and even that upsets me, because I just love to go to Farmer's Market. And what impressed me most about this last Thursday was, I didn't know anybody. And I thought that was a great statement, because people came from all over the place to enjoy our Farmer's Market. And I'd also like to say how wonderful it is that I have attended two EDC meetings in person, and I get to go to my first Chamber of Commerce meeting in person.
All right.
And the only thing I want to add is that I have decided that 2021 is going to be the year that I proclaim how fortunate and lucky we are in the United States to have freedoms, to be able to do this, to go to church, to go to a Farmer's Market, and you may, you know, speak up. I'm not going to be the only one, I'm not a voice crying in the wilderness, but we take for granted what we have, and we took that for granted for a whole year, and we can't do that anymore.
Thank you, Sissy. John, anything tonight?
I also attended Farmer's Market and the flag ceremony, and I learned some neat things about the flag that I did not know, and also when I was at the Farmer's Market, I saw a lot of familiar faces that I knew. So that's like my social outing for the week, whatever, and I enjoy it very much. It was a little bit hot, though.
Yeah. We'll stay tuned.
It was a hot tamale.
Wednesday is supposed to get down to 38, so that'll be.
Oh, are you?
So, we're having our air conditioning put in right now, just in time. All right. At this point, we'll go to closed session, go into closed session, and if there's anything to report, we'll be out at the steps of City Hall, going to City Hall annex for the meeting. Thank you.